Jerry.
My name is Jerry Fox. I'm co-chair and public safety and cemetery and parks and rec.
Fire department supervisor.
James.
He's connecting.
Okay.
His audio areas. James. James, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go.
James is here.
So we're doing roll call, James. Do you want to announce?
James Glover, roads and utilities.
Excellent. Thank you. Any disclosures from anyone on the board? Sorry, and I should also introduce, we have Brianna Sullivan, who will be hopefully shortly appointed as for CT as well.
Thank you, Mike.
Any disclosures at all for anything on the agenda? Not hearing any. Sorry, I should have read the warning. The Gordo Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as founded Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Now on to agenda revisions and approval. So first of all, I would ask if anyone would like to for approval of tonight's agenda, or in fact, any or any modifications to it.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thanks, Jerry. Any second? Is that Aaron?
Yep, second.
Thank you. Can you do the roll call for us, either Kyle or Margaret?
I can do it. Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Okay, that sounded like four zero. May 18th, GBOS regular meeting minutes approval. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Thank you. So that was a motion by Jerry, second by Aaron. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, let's move over to move to the roll call.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. So finally, May 18th, 2020 GBOS Special Meeting Regarding Seat E Minutes Approval.
Not many minutes there. I'll make a motion to approve as written.
We hear a second.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Kyle?
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand virtually and wait to be acknowledged. Please take side conversations, put yourself on mute. For anyone who isn't used to Zoom, raise hands. If you select the participant list, there's a raise hand option at the bottom of that. GBOS Nonprofit Recreation Grant Application Cycle is open May the first through June the 19th, 2022, which is later this week. Applications are available online at the Muni GPS site and via email from Margaret. GBOS 2021 Budget Meeting Dates are scheduled as follows. Meeting one is Tuesday, the July the 14th from seven to nine. Meeting two is July the 28th, seven to nine. Meeting three will be in August and the grants presentation will be in September. The municipality of Anchorage, GBOS Quarterly Meeting is scheduled for July the 27th, 2020 at 4:00 PM in the mayor's conference room on the eighth floor of Anchorage City Hall. And one other general announcement is wood cutting is not allowed on public land. Trees have been cut and removed from public land recently at the Gerwin Industrial Park and from the roadside along Aliaska Highway. Permission to alter land or retain firewood from public land must be received beforehand from the land manager. Okay, introductions, presentations and reports. I think this first one is for Kyle introduction, status of appointment of new GBOS member taking on CT. Kyle?
Yes. So at the next assembly meeting, Brianna Sullivan will be on the agenda for the assembly to appoint her to that seat. At the last meeting, it just a mix up in communication, the her resume got lost in the in the communication chain. So we'll have her on the next assembly meeting and it passes there. She can be seated right away and we'll help her through with the clerk's office to get the appropriate paperwork filled out.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions or comments other than we're looking forward to it? Okay, item two, update from Chris Hooty about COVID-19 response by the municipality.
At this point, we don't have Chris with us. He said it was if he can make it tonight, he was trying to balance a bunch of things.
Okay. Do you have any general information you can share with us, Kyle?
Just from reports from listening to the Rinse Operations Center, you know, there's definitely concern with the spikes that we've been seeing over the last 10 days. Today was, you know, a nice sign to see a single digit, but having 29 the day before. You know, has as the administration concerned, we're mostly concerned for the hospital space and if that intends to increase, that seems to be stable. The testing demand has increased significantly, especially with elective surgeries coming into play and now the procedures at the airport where people are getting off the plane, getting tested and then they need to get retested within seven to 14 days, or if they show up with a proof that they did pass or were negative within the last 72 hours, they still need to show up. So that demand is actually being pushed to the testing sites in the community. Most likely the Providence drive up on Lake Otis. So there's been those struggles and it really is just such an unknown roadmap. They're just day to day figuring out how to keep things going and getting supplies where they're needed and responding to demands that are unpredictable. So, but they're working hard at it.
Thank you. I mean, there's no editorial comment. You see, you see a drop in the weekend reports anyway. So it's not, it's the low numbers reporting on Saturday and Sundays is not a huge surprise. Any other comments or discussion from the board? Any other comments or discussion from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three, update on good valley service area summer employment. Again, Kyle.
So the application period ends today, tonight at midnight, it would be the last by midnight's last time, the chance to apply. The process took much longer than we thought, but actually went faster than normal for government hiring process to get these two jobs out there. And it's in response to us not be able to hire SCA students this summer to do trail crew. And so hopefully tomorrow we'll receive applications and then we can set up interviews and then conduct interviews this week. And then hopefully get a recommendation in for hire by the end of week, if everything goes right and then be able to get some people on hopefully next week if we can work that well. So tentatively, probably the last full week of June, we'll have two people on and we'll get them right into the field working for the rest of the summer.
Thank you. Do you have any visibility of how many people have applied? Is it a healthy application or do you not know until tomorrow?
I know at least three. I mean, we've had three people reach out to us to say they applied, but we don't see the applications until employee relations qualifies him and sends him to us.
Understood. That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Or from the audience? Okay, we'll move on to item four legislative report. I don't see John or Suzanne or Kathy or Jennifer or any of their representatives.
No.
I'm missing someone.
Adams here.
I don't think Adam may be here for a different reason.
Oh, okay, okay.
Probably for public comment, little guy, so I'm guessing. Okay, with nobody here, I don't know if we have anything to discuss then I'll move on to unless there's anything anybody wanted to comment on. Either the board or the public. Okay, item five supervisors report, a public safety Jerry.
Okay. The PSAC meeting for April was canceled and we have another one scheduled for July 6th. And I'm unsure whether we'll have that meeting, but Kyle or Margaret, do you have any idea? Are we going to start those meetings up again?
I think we'll run it by the committee and see what their level of comfortability is and determine if it's going to happen or not.
Okay. And Chief Shea, I don't know if he's on, but I don't think he is, but he gave out the statistics for the month of May and I think it's in the packet, showed an increase from April in traffic enforcement and other traffic enforcement was due to requests for greater enforcement on the Aliaska Highway and Crow Creek Road. And the other was an increase in animal calls, specifically moose and bear. But other than that, I don't have much else about public safety.
I might just add a little bit, and this has to do more maybe with the animal calls, but the Girdwood Bear Alliance have been great this summer. They've been very responsive to a lot of calls in town. We had an initial hotspot up on St. Johann with a big, large two-year-old black bear up there and they are very helpful in getting responding. And I think the community feels real comfortable coming to them. And and they've been responsive and then code enforcement as well has been working with the Bear Alliance to enact the new code for the bear safety zone or the trash, secure trash zone here in Gerwood. So I really want to give thanks to those volunteers for being out there and being responsive and and I work with them quite a bit as they as they deal with problems.
You, Kyle. Yes, I know. I think there's still some ongoing issues up on St. Johann. And I know there's a there's a use of the unwelcome mat, which is kind of an electric fence mat type thing, which should result in some unpleasantness to the to the bear if it tries to get into some of the trash. Anything else, Jerry?
Nope.
Okay, any comments or questions from other board members or the public? Let's move on to roads and utilities, James.
I don't really have anything to report, but I'd like to thank Kyle and the and the crew out there for working hard on the roads. It seems like the dust mitigation is going pretty well this season and I haven't had any complaints.
Excellent. Thank you. So now it's Parks and Recreation Cemetery, Jerry, again.
Um Cemetery, I think we're still just waiting for Eagle River to figure out if they're going to have a cemetery and then try to meet up with them on a bond proposition. So nothing's happened in cemetery that I know of. Parks and Rec. Kyle, you don't do your normal report, do you? So I guess I could just say a little bit. You know, the planners were planted a week ago Friday and the planners look great. So thanks to Margaret and everybody who helped out and planted the planners. They look good. Hand tram is closed until the safety modifications are agreed upon by the MOA and that means it's probably closed for the rest of the summer. Kyle talked about the two full-time hirees. The signs that the Eagle Scout, I think the post got put in or did the whole sign get put in, Kyle?
I was the Micah Weddington Eagle Scout led a group of boy scouts who installed all the signage on the Beaver Pond Trail, which included the interpretation signage you'll find at the beginning. And they did the whole thing. They figured it out and they worked with Trails Committee members to get the signs created. So if you get a chance to go out there, that is sort of the prototype for the signage that we're looking towards for the rest of the valley, which includes the safety signage that's on there for for location if you had an emergency.
That's good. Thanks, Kyle. And then the KT KMTA grant to work on Virgin Peak Falls, the federal funding requires that section 106 archaeological survey is completed and KMTA plans to assist with the section 106 study. And other than that, the Trail Plan Subcommittee has been suspended due to COVID. And that's about all I have for trails. Unless Kyle has anything to add, Kyle or Margaret?
No, the one thing that we just let public know is the work on the Laura Diderot Trail has begun and we'll probably go for the next several weeks as Andy works down there. So we posted signage, let people be aware as you go through the area that the contractor is working there.
Could you remind us which area that is, Kyle?
That is the section from the AWO Treatment Plant up to the end of the cul-de-sac here on Corleos Road.
Thank you. Any question? I can't pronounce it. Any any questions from audience or board members, Parks and Rec? Hearing none, let's move on to fire department. Erin?
Yeah, so we are, the fire department is preparing to resume contract negotiations with AFD for the EMS and Rescue Service. And we had a meeting last week and Michelle and Man stepped us through the numbers. They're they're finalizing those numbers so that we can have a starting place for negotiations with AFD. So we're meeting again tomorrow to look at those revised numbers and hopefully it'll go on from there. And then is Michelle on the call?
No, she says she wouldn't be here, but I think Sarah might might give some input on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, are you going to go through her, the update that she sent us?
No, I was just going to talk about the upcoming election this week.
Okay, I'll just hit on a few things and then you can, I'll give you the floor. So in her summary report for the month, there have been five COVID diagnosed in Gerwood, many recovered. They have new powered air purifier respirators in service for ambulance transports. Let's see. As far as burning and woodlots, the next woodlot opening is June 20th. Burning is currently banned due to high fire danger. And I believe that's for like open burning. Last I saw the burning in a fire pit is allowed at this time. The other woodlot dates are June 20th, July 18th and August 15th. And they've had 187 calls year to date. They have 39 firefighters currently operational. Three members have just completed probation. See. They are bringing on extra advanced life support medic, paramedic coverage in July. They have raised funds for five new dry suits. Huge thank you to Gerwood Rotary and Community Members. Suburban was donated to the CERT team by firefighter Lou Morgan, who moved out of the community. Two bear spray holders for e-bikes donated by Mountain Metal. Raised veggie garden donated by firefighters. They received a loan of used fire equipment from AFD and received a forestry grant to replace aging equipment. So that's all good news. Let's see. And I know Sarah, you're going to talk about the upcoming election. I just wanted to thank board members that are leaving Ben, hey, Ha Becker, sorry if I mispronounce your name and Deb Essex for your service over the years. And Sarah, I'll turn it over to you now.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so what Erin was saying, big thanks to Ben and Deb. They've been working behind the scenes still because of all the COVID. We've had to postpone for a while this election that we're trying to host, hoping will go on this Friday and Saturday. It's it's Friday night, 5:00 to 8:00 PM and Saturday morning, 9:00 AM to noon. We thought initially we were going to be able to try and have it outside the post office to try and get as much foot traffic as we could. But it's not going to work to do it there. So we are instead going to do it outside kind of in the entrance area to the community center between like the main entrance area to try and get as much foot traffic as we can. We're encouraging folks to, of course, wear masks because we're kind of requiring an in-person vote. Just with the way everything worked out this year for this election. So we have two open seats. And we have currently two public or community members that stepped up to run Paula Bogdan and Larry Daniels. There's only two nominees and there's only two open seats. So if people show up to vote and they don't know anyone they want to write in, there's two people that they can vote for. And the top two people that get voted for in the community will have will fill those two open seats. So I just wanted to make that announcement tonight that it's again this Friday, 5:00 to 8:00 PM and then Saturday, 9:00 AM to noon. That's it.
Thank you, Sarah. I have one question. Can you, so that's the, you mean the entrance to the library, the foyer outside the library?
Yeah, yeah.
Understood. And who can vote?
Anyone that lives within the Gerwood Fire Service Area. So anybody that lives in Gerwood with a P O box in Gerwood. We're just requesting that folks show their valid ID just so we know that they're Gerwood residents.
Thank you. Any questions for Erin or Sarah? Okay, we'll move on to item A, land use, which is me. I think the only general land use announcement I have is the assembly last week voted, or maybe it was week four last, voted to directly change code so that food trucks are allowed in the zone around the brewery. Normally it'd be a longer process and go through planning and zoning and various other things, but due to timeliness, it was voted on directly. So thank you to everyone who worked on that. Land use meeting last week was a very quick affair and covered material which we're also covering tonight. The title one, chapter nine review Subcommittee and Housing Working Group, both currently suspended and don't have meetings due to COVID. And that's it. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment, state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. And must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. If you raise your hand in Zoom, then I'll call on you. Okay, I see. Recognize Adam Lees? First, Adam.
Hi, my name is Adam Lees and if any of you got confused, my Kyle was wondering if I had an assembly report. I used to be Suzanne LaFrance's Assembly aide, but now I am running for the state legislature for House District 28, whose second most southern precinct is Gerwood. Portage beat you out by just ever so much. But yes, I'm in a three, I'll be in a three-way race between whoever wins the Republican primary and a third party candidate who is self-funding. I decided to get into the race after being asked at least a half a dozen times because Alaska is the place where I felt the most at home and I want to see it succeed and prosper for the infinite future and not have that prosperity tied to the whims of dictators, half a world, the way that don't know or care anything about us. The last two legislatures have been absolute disasters and kicking the can down the road as far as the fiscal pain and the budget. Not actually dealing with the structures and trying to ignore making hard decisions until they all came together at once and in the middle of a pandemic, which is not exactly convenient. I'm going in to try to at least balance the budget while also making strategic investments to diversify Alaska's economy so that it can take advantage of trends that really do favor it and start moving to a more dynamic diverse base where we actually educate our children and where our highways don't go unpatrolled and forcing a municipal government to take over it. And I'm also looking for smart changes to make our localities far more flexible to serve their citizens' needs because the one thing the state has done and the one thing you'll hear is about how much the budget has been cut, but most of those cuts have rolled right back on to municipal governments, Anchorage, more so than many of them. I'm sure if you ask Chief Michelle about the issues down the Seward Highway with responding to traffic accidents in the Kenai. The state troopers were completely removed because of budget cuts that Dunlevy and both of my opponents supported. And as a result, she could not send the Gerwood Volunteer Fire Department down there to safely help them. That is a safety risk for all Alaskans. And it is honestly one that was completely preventable if we were able to have smart discussions on where we actually spend the most bits of our money. And the fact that we have no sustainable revenue source besides the permanent fund or apportionment. And that's just not sufficient right now. And so to resum, I would be happy to take any questions or if anyone's curious about where I stand on any particular issue of importance to them, I'm always happy. My website, once it's up and running, is going to be adamleesforstatehouse.com and I'll be more than willing, and I can't wait to get down to Gerwood to start knocking on doors and meeting more people and going to the brewery again.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions from anybody else?
I had a question for Adam. Do you have a phone number or an email that you're comfortable sharing?
I also have a Zoom that's Tanquerous. Yes, I have. My phone number for the campaign is 907-885-4795. And the email is contact@adamleesforstatehouse.com.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Adam. I'll do the two more hands. So I'll do them mathematically. Carl Johnson, welcome, Carl.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, everybody. My name is Carl Johnson and like Adam, I am also running for state legislature, except I'm running for the state senate district N. My website is carlforalaska.com and that's the number four in the middle. And for the record, my mailing address is P O box 110222, Anchorage, 99511, Tac 0222. So I I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that Adam said about the reasons why he's running because we're running for very similar reasons. We need to diversify our economy and to let you know a little bit about my perspective on that. In a past life, I was an attorney, but now I'm a small business owner. I have a tour company that actually operates frequently down, turning an arm and in Gerwood, not only independently with our own tours, but in cooperation with some Gerwood businesses like Aliaska Resorts and Alpine Air. And I think that tourism offers an opportunity for a more sustainable economic engine for Alaska than the commodities markets can provide sometimes. I also agree with Adam on mismanagement of our budget and how it's impacted communities. And I really think that we need to have people in the state legislature who are open-minded, who are willing to accept new ideas and consider new ideas and take them seriously rather than kind of sticking to the same old plan that, you know, for the last decade just hasn't taken us in the right direction. But I've been living in Alaska for 20 years. If you want a little, a little bit more about what brought me up here, it was the practice of law. But during my time here, this is the longest I've ever lived in any one location in my entire life. I grew up an Air Force brat, so I moved down a lot, around a lot as a result of that. And I was in the Navy myself. So I moved around a bit as a result of that. But Alaska is the place that I have settled to, you know, include and think of as home more than any place I've ever lived. And I know Alaska has a lot of incredible potential. We have a lot of resources that are untapped, not only what we might think of as traditional resources, but the people, resources, our culture, the things that make Alaska the bucket list destination of people for around from around the world. We have a lot here to offer. And I think we're not doing a good job of serving our communities and our people with what we've been doing. So that's why I'm running and. Our communities and our people with what we've been doing. So that's why I'm running. And like Adam, I'm also going to have a kind of a three-way race because after. Whoever wins the Republican primary, Kathy Geese is being challenged by Roger Holland. There is a Libertarian Independent candidate who will also be. On the general if she gets her petition signatures. So it's it's going to be interesting race all around. And running the race will be challenging, of course, because of what we're doing right now with changing how we interact socially. So that's all I have. And thank you again for your time. And I appreciate the opportunity to address everyone.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions from anybody? Okay, I'm not hearing questions. Thanks again, Carl. Move on to the the third public comment. Julie.
Everybody, my name's Julie Raymond Yakobian, P O Box nine two four Gerwood. And I'm also a commissioner on the municipality's Historic Preservation Commission. And I just wanted to let everybody know that as of today. The public review draft of the local landmark register ordinance is available for public review. Yay. It's been a long time coming and it'll be out for review today through August thirty first. And just wanted to read you a little bit of the. The blurb that went out today from the muni about it. In nineteen ninety-five, the municipality of Anchorage became a certified local government under the National Historic Preservation Act. To ensure our municipality had a greater say in historic preservation. In two thousand and six, the Anchorage Assembly took great strides forward in recognizing the importance of a historic preservation program. The Assembly not only established the program, but also the Historic Preservation Commission with specific powers and duties. One of the HPC's duties is to prepare and submit to the Assembly Mayor and Planning and Zoning Commission. An ordinance for the establishment of local landmarks. Taking this duty to heart, the HPC has been working diligently to formulate the local landmark register ordinance. When adopted, it will assist us in the recognition of the unique cultural and historic resources found throughout our community. Anyone may nominate a historic or cultural resource to the municipal-wide historic inventory, but if property owner's approval is required for all nominations. Cultural and historic resources give the public valuable information about the people who came before, their way of life, struggles and successes. Each local landmark listed on this local landmark register will provide information about the building, district, structure. Site, landscape, traditional cultural property, object, or travel route described in the accompanying nomination form. We will also learn how each of these significant cultural or historic resources contributes to our cultural and historical past. The local landmark registers are foundational elements of historic preservation programs. The shared information that comes from the local landmark register will enable our community to recognize and preserve our unique history and culture. By providing a nomination process to inventory and list the different cultural and historic resources that we have. So again, today through August thirty first, this ordinance is open for public review and I really encourage everybody to take a look at it. Including the Board of Supervisors and to provide any feedback that you might have to the commission. We're really excited about this. We each each of the commissioners already has a long list of. Places and objects and buildings we'd like to see nominated to this register. So really looking forward to being able to move this on to the Assembly later this summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions?
Yeah, I had one. Julie, where was that? What website or what page does that live on?
It should be on the commission's website. If it didn't make it up this afternoon, it'll be up tomorrow. And actually, once I have. A direct link to the document, I will send that to you and Margaret. So maybe you can put it in the announcements for future meetings.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to actually jump back. I see John Weddleton is is on is has joined the meeting. So I'm actually going to jump back to the to item four, the legislative report and just give John the opportunity to speak if he'd like to.
Oh, sure. Thanks. Yeah, sorry. It's a little bit late. I guess we haven't spoken for a while, but you know, of course, COVID's changed a lot of the ways we've done some things and we are, Assembly spent a huge amount of time. Trying to decide how to prioritize the likely hundred and fifty-nine million dollars that Anchorage will get as a. Part of the CARES Act funding. And, you know, we're still as a group kind of trying to figure that out, but things like putting money towards the Gerwood Clinic and the. Little Bears is on the list. And I see that Chris Shute spoke before. Did he already cover some of this? Mike?
Chris wasn't able to make it unfortunately today.
Okay, he wasn't because I think he's had conversations with you and perhaps and Kyle about this. But that's something that I think people are interested in, you know, it speaks to kind of the resiliency, you know, for future pandemics and so on. If we can, you know, expand the Gerwood Clinic, which needed expansion anyway, and Little Bears. I think you had it all designed and ready to go. And then sadly, that bond didn't pass, but you know, requirements for daycare are now different, given kind of our new thinking on pandemics. So that's something that we're kind of working for as a use of part of the funds. But we'll see how that goes. It's all new to us. And we're also looking at, you know, to use a lot of the money to revive the economy. Certainly, building something is good, but. You know, things that can get a lot of people working are good and trail work is something that we can get going very quickly and it takes a lot of people with not a huge amount of training. And there's some trails in the Gerwood area that I know are kind of on a list of possible projects that may. Be on that list. So this is all it's on the list. We're still as a group trying to figure things out, but I think in the next four weeks we'll have. Kind of a list of projects or uses the money pretty much nailed down. So those are still in play. We also have working on what to do with the alcohol tax money, which will begin collecting in February of next year. And we're going to have three town halls and one is in Gerwood in August, but the date's not set yet. But that's something to be thinking about. You know, what would what would be useful for that? And I think specifically, you know, things in Gerwood, you know, and likely be something like the clinic and so on, you know, where would it be useful? So you have some time to think about that. And then I, you know, we can't ignore, you know, what's gone on the last few weeks, you know, calls for more, you know, equity and justice. Throughout our society. I mean, that I gotta admit, it took me totally by surprise, the turmoil. I mean, can't look at what happened in Minneapolis without being just absolutely shocked, but that it. Created a worldwide. You know, impact is really, I guess, impressive. And. So that's something that we've kind of been looking at. Certainly an education for me through my time on the Assembly, but we'll be doing more and more. And I think we have a very good police force, but. There are things that we could probably do to improve and increase transparency and. That's something that we're actively looking at now, too. So there's a couple of highlights on what we're doing, but I'll hang out and listen if there's any questions. Here I am.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, Mike. Can you hear me?
Please, yeah, please go ahead.
Oh, John, I'm just wondering how we can express our support for CARES Act funding for Gerwood projects. Is that something we should just? Be at the Assembly meetings or how does that work?
Good question. You know, the we're having a huge amount of work sessions and we had, I think, three, four-hour work sessions where. Nonprofits talk to us about the issues they're having, the opportunities and so on. And. But it would be good to get in well prior to a Tuesday meeting where we might vote. So. You know, if you guys just have a, you know, letter from G boss as a resolution supporting. Any projects, you know, the trails or clinic, or if you have other things, you know, that are, and really, we're looking for. Things that would help us to deal with pandemics better in the future. And also things that will create jobs now, you know, because we have, I mean, people got money, the twelve hundred dollars and the unemployment boost. But those are going to hand. And a lot of people, as you would know, that are in the tourist industry, they don't have jobs for the summer like they expect. So if there are things that are very. Shovel-ready and could create a lot of jobs in a hurry in the Gerwood area, add those to the letter. Yeah, we'd get those in play as soon as possible.
And when do you plan on voting?
I think it'll be July probably, but in the next three or four weeks, we have at least two more long meetings to go over and start prioritizing stuff. And those are work session type meetings.
Thanks, John.
Thanks. I don't think actually anyone from the clinic or Little Bears has approached GBOS yet on this topic. I'm not aware of. I'm aware the things are going on in the background, but I don't think anyone's actually approached us yet.
Okay, I'll encourage them to do that.
Right. So where would we find out when the when and where the? The work sessions are?
You know, look at the Assembly page on the website and we have a pretty early, there's a link that says Assembly Response to COVID and it has a lot of information from there.
Okay, thanks, John. Any other questions from the community? Okay, thanks for, thanks for coming, John. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go back to our regular order. We have now moved to old business. Item six, agenda item L U C twenty zero five dash zero four. Request for GBOS Letter of Non-Objection for the Herbal Cash LLC Marijuana License Renewal. Brent Cars presenting with a TBRN.
Hi, Mike. Thanks. This is Brent Cars. I'm the owner of the Herbal Cash. I did present last month and I can give a short kind of overview if you wanted that. It's up to you.
Yes, if you could just give a quick overview, we'd appreciate it.
So kind of just starting from the beginning, we're coming up on a year. I think we ended up opening July fourteenth or so. So we got another month or so. Over that year, you know, it's been pretty good. We haven't had any negative feedback from any customers or anyone from the community. We were expecting to extend hours early this summer. And so now we're kind of expecting hopefully kind of by July. So it should just be an extra four hours. So we should go from ten to ten, I think, is the goal. During the kind of COVID pandemic, we definitely, you know, changed over operating plans. We did, you know, masks and limited our. Occupancy in the store. We did also attain the muni and state approval to allow curbside pickup and exterior window sales. We didn't implement that, but it's a good thing to have with the kind of second spikes coming in. Play. We just want to be prepared for if we do need to do something along those lines. Other than that, I've been really privileged to be able to stay open and be considered a essential business. So it's been a really good year and look forward to many more in the future.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions from anyone on the board? I'd just like to say again, thank you for coming along. I know you've kept us informed throughout the process. Any questions from anyone else? Any other community members? Or guests? Okay, hearing none.
You want me to read the letter?
We don't normally read letters. We only read resolutions. So I don't think we need to. I think we do need to vote, however. So if you have a, if you have a emotion, I'd be happy to hear that, Jerry.
I would like to make a motion for a letter of non-objection to the. Herbal Cash's retail marijuana store.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, James. Any discussion? The letter, I think there's a draft letter in the in the meeting packet. There's no discussion from board members. Again, I'll open it to to community members and guests. I'm not hearing any comments, so I think we should move to a vote. Kyle, can you do the roll call for us, please?
Yes, James Glover.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Carl. So that passes. So I think we we get the letter signed and sent off. Thank you. Item number, now we move on to new business. Item number seven, discuss agenda topics for the. Municipal manager and GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for July the twenty seventh at four P M. Anchorage City Hall. Obviously, we're not sure if that's meeting is going to go ahead in person. But that's how it's currently scheduled. Let's start with you, Kyle. Do you have any comments on the meeting itself?
I would say plan for it and give us some agenda items. And then I tried to meet with Bill this week. He's balancing a little bit more between the two worlds. He's been the E O C chief for for. Quite some time now, but even with Chris, Chris could also run the meeting, too. So. If there's any agenda items that we really want to discuss, we can always, if we don't do it in person, we can do it by Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I think the meeting should go ahead if it's if it's virtual, even if it's not in person. So I guess the question is, are any topics? So I'll ask the board members, are there any topics you see we should discuss? I think one is. Potentially COVID funding or funding, especially since the community has been so hit by tourism this year.
Also. Yeah.
Fire department contract negotiations.
Right. I think we also have the general question about the funding model as well. I know it was discussed just before COVID as something that. I think they, the municipality is aware, it's very unbalanced between fire department funding versus EMS funding. So I'm not sure if that had the opportunity to look at that, but I know it was under discussion. We should have that on there as well.
Do we have any other items on the list or was there a list started before this meeting?
I think this is where we're starting. And nothing came up from land use.
Okay.
I will take the opportunity to go back and look at the minutes from the last time we had the meeting and just see if there's anything I I recall. I haven't had the opportunity to do that yet. We'll have this discussion again next month. And he's not hearing anything more. Again, we'll discuss that next month. So let's move on to item eight. Good with Valley Service Area Industrial Yard Lot Proposal to Bring Electric Power to the Parcel. Again, Kyle.
Sure. This will be a two-step approach. I want to quickly just give you an update because this all came the new light to me today with. Our Alberg repave and grind. We thought we were doing really well and we thought we'd gotten all the comments back. And then at the last moment, we realized that one of the comments got lost. Basically, I don't think he just during the transition to home, working from home, one of the traffic engineers didn't submit his comments. Well, we got his comments. And it's kind of spiraled the project out of control with costs. There's basically a new requirement by for any improvements to roads, even when we're doing a grind and repave maintenance project. We have to comply to ADA standards on the new design specs for roads. Where bike paths intersect with roadways. And so. What that does is it creates swoops. For Alberg Road because we would have to put the swoops in to connect to Alberg. Because those are the new design standards that brings the pedestrian in front of the stop bar instead of behind, which it currently is now. Just that alone. Is going to probably, at the very least, just the asphalt alone to do that would be somewhere between sixty-five to eighty thousand dollars. To put in. And that's saying, dealing with the unforeseen things that we haven't gotten far into. Which could be relocation utilities. Rebuild of subsurface. And then the other requirement that traffic is is requiring is the replacement of all traffic signage. So all new signage would have to go in. So unfortunately, what we thought could be a simple maintenance repair with grinding up the road and turning it into this or repaving it. Now is 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 turned into something that could have additional costs of two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars once we grind down into all the details. So at this point, I'm going to kind of reshuffle the cards and we're going to kind of look to see what we can still do. What we're concerned about is we still have grant funding from the state. And we're afraid if we don't use it, we may lose it. And so we may go back and look at different things. One thing that does definitely need to be replaced in that section of road is the guard rail. And then there's a shorter section which does not connect to the bike path that we could possibly deal with and just use the grant funding for that project. So. I will probably have more news to you guys as we move forward and find out more information. But like I said, it came into light today. So. into light today. So so before I move forward, any questions related to that?
Absolutely, yes.
I have a question.
So do I. So let you go first, Jerry.
Well, Mike, it's just pretty simple. Like you said, couldn't we just go from Moose Meadows Parking Lot to the hotel? Wouldn't that cut out a lot of that swoops?
It could. Yes. I mean, we could do that and and do that portion. Probably probably don't like about that is that, once again, now you've done a third section and you have a section that still needs to be completed up the road. And so you're going from historically old asphalt to new asphalt to older asphalt again. And and so that that is one thing that we are going to explore because there are two cross culverts in there that need replacement. And at the very least, we could maybe do those replacements and do that. So yes, I think that would be part of what we can look at, too. I would I would much rather just pave the whole section so that it's uniformly same asphalt all the way through. We're not looking at cut sections, which can have, once you start cutting asphalt, they all develop their own personality.
I'm guessing not a positive personality.
No, sometimes they're not.
Yeah, my question was, I didn't completely understand what you meant about the swoop. So this would be these would be sort of Davos and Cortina and Brighton.
Yes.
That area.
Yeah, it would be. It would be, yep, Aspen Mountain, Dover, Davos.
So those four.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the bike path is only on that side. So where's this coming from? Because that's a lot of state roads. So doesn't need to be state standards, does it?
It's municipal standards and it's as a result of a lawsuit that's happened within the last year that held communities to these standards for not addressing those needs as they're putting money towards projects. So and, you know, it's probably a good thing to force upon communities. Unfortunately, it makes it really expensive. And as we know, sometimes these swoops don't turn out what their intentions were. And then you have all these problems with it. And that's, you know, once I heard the word swoops, you know, I was like, oh, God, here we go again, you know, and in that aspect. But if you're rebuilding a section like that, you would definitely want to rebuild it right. And if you're putting asphalt where there wasn't asphalt before, you want to have your subgrade right as well.
Okay, I mean, based on the based on the revisions which the state made to the swoops, I I mean, I don't know what the dimensions are, but it may not actually apply to. There's a there's a range in which the stop car stop bar can be, if I recall correctly, there there isn't a huge gap between the between the shoulder edge and the edge of the bike path along some of those junctions.
No, it would be a much tighter situation than we have now, but but it would be a significant change.
Well, I'm just I'm just wondering if there actually is a significant change. I know there was a in the loosening up of the standards after they built the swoops on Aliaska Highway or the the relaxation to allow to land stop bar to be further back. I don't know how far off we actually are on those.
Yeah.
I think that's one thing we have to measure and ask.
Yeah. And the initial measurements they did, you know, it would definitely have a financial impact on the whole.
Okay, right. Right. Could you share that information? I'd be interested to see it.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the community?
I have a question, Mike.
Oh, sure.
What is the what is our timeframe for kind of figuring out, getting our questions answered and deciding which direction we want to go?
Well, I definitely will give you a briefing by the end of the month. I probably by hopefully the end of this week or early next week, I'll have more of a defined idea about what we're going to do. Because if we want to pull something off, we want to pull it off in August. So in that aspect. So the project, if the projects become smaller, that'd be actually fairly easy to do if we're just focusing on using the grant funds at this time.
So the moment the candidates look like either the culverts or the or the rail?
Or the rail. It could be both, depending on the way that things work out. You know, we're for the rail, we are seeing. Well, I can't think of the number right now, but it was affordable and then depends on what we do with the small section of asphalt if we can make it work. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Kyle, I just want to, if you needed any help doing any legwork with some of that stuff, let me know.
Okay, will do.
So that brings us to the proposal to bring electric power to the industrial yard.
Yeah, so we gained some momentum on this. And in in the packet today, there's a proposal from Chugash to bring power in. And then this is something that we've actually tabled because HLB was trying to work on it, too. I initially contacted Chugash and said, hey, we'd like to get power to our industrial lot. Right now, our power is on a pedestal that's off our lot. And so in the winter, when they're keeping equipment warm, when it's plugged in, and it's all sort of circled off, not not associated with with the industrial lot. And so once we talked to Chugash, HLB got on board with it and they are trying to look at how to bring power to other lots and other tenants down there, too. But at this point, I want to keep moving forward to this and want to introduce this to you. Basically, we're looking to bring in electric to the bull rail down there and then be able to install lighted lights so we can light up the yards in those dark nights in the winter. And in order to do that, we need to bring a transformer to the lot from the existing pedestal in the in our area. And that would be $17,000 to bring that in. And then they would put a meter off of that to install. And then from there, it would be additional costs, which I don't have an estimate yet on, to actually run power, basically put in a power to the lot and so that the machines and the lights can be installed, or the machines can plug into the outlets there. So that would be the next step after we after you do this. But I think it may be a two step process at this point. And and we would try to get the power to the lot this winter. And then next year, address getting the electricity lined out in the lot. I think there's some more thinking that needs to go into that. And there's a few other projects we want to finish down there before we fully lay that out.
Okay, how far is that? How far is that actually being run?
Let's see here. Try to look at the map. Yeah, on here, one thing is it's about I would say it's about 200 yards of distance that they're bringing from that transfer transformer to the new transformer. And that would be in the very far corner, what is our northwest corner of the lot, right up against the Ailinths.
Right. Got it. So it's actually being brought northwards.
Correct. And in this plan, they don't show the cul-de-sac, but the cul-de-sac is there. So you would just imagine a circle at the end of the parking of the road.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
And so Chugash would do all the work. They would come in, they would trench it, they would bury it, and then they would install it. And so that's what the costs are there. And as he said, they estimated on the high side, but there's certain things that they didn't ask for. Like, we had winter construction or things along those lines.
Okay, it says in the S, it says in the estimate, existing conduit is usable. So is there a conduit already in there?
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to trench?
They had a conduit that they put in during the road construction. And so they're hoping that they can plug into that and then bring it under the road to the lot.
Okay.
Yep. That's one thing we requested during construction for them to put that conduit in because we knew we needed power at some point in time.
So they are they are not trenching, or they are trenching?
Well, they probably have to trench to the conduit from where our
Oh, okay.
and then trench out of the of the conduit to our pedestal location. We didn't have a pedestal location or a transformer location in mind when we originally did the plans.
Understood. Okay. Sorry, Aaron, I interrupted you.
Oh, it's all right. I'm just curious how this does this affect other other users down in that area? Like, because if I remember right, we lease that from HLB, just like all the other land users down there. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. So there are three other tenants. Three tenants have one lot and the one tenant has actually three lots. The five first lots that were part of the first phase one development, they actually have utilities to them. I don't know if they have communication, but they have natural gas and electric to their lots. And then from there, they could set up power to the lots. So they have it actually right at their doorstep. We don't have it at our doorstep. So we would we were bringing power to our lot, which right now is not feasible for us to actually go set up a temporary meter and get things set up. So and that's why HLB was looking into it. So looking at trying to bring power to Bob Wolf's lot as well. So he doesn't have power either.
Okay.
So two of two of the three snow removal operation operators don't have permit powers or lots. We depend on temporary power, which isn't very productive or efficient.
If I'm right in my understanding, that one of the differences is the the five lots on the other side are all sort of platted and legal and complete. And we are still basing on a year tier permit, isn't it, rather than a true lease?
Yes, we're basically sharing, we're sharing a portion of a track and we aren't, we aren't officially platted out. But HLB said, well, were you bringing that power? That corner is perfect because that's going to be a corner of a lot of the GBOS lot when we eventually do plat that area.
Right. So we're saving a bit of money later.
Yes.
So could other tenants down there in that unplotted unplatted area come off of the same power line that that we're putting in? Or would they have to run their own?
No, they should be able to. Our transformers off of face is off the phase three secondary line that feeds Girdwood. So that's the line that comes up the middle of the valley. It's underground. They installed that about five years ago. So we have a transformer that's based off of that. So there should be more than enough power there to supply those lots and eventually all the lots that are developed south of there.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody?
Yes, I just asked, so when are you looking for money?
Well, I might be looking for money at the next meeting.
And then we're talking about Rhodes Capital, where we get it from?
Yes, depending on what we decide to do with the with the asphalt project. And what I'm most likely will probably do is I'll try to learn more about that here. And then we'll try to call for a special meeting to discuss that. And then if it looks like the Rhodes Capital is tied to the to the paving project, then we may look at the undesignated fund.
Okay, thanks.
There's one more question. Does it make sense that we that we pay for it? Or is that something that HLB as the landowner should pay for?
I think you're the latter. It's a tenant improvement. And so they're leasing us a lot with no utilities. And and so it's almost kind of like what we do right now at the police station in the sense that when we went to look at the police station, it had no bathroom and all that, they would have rented to us at that. And then they made the improvements and we paid back the improvements over three years, which we just wrapped up. So so it could be a negotiation aspect, ask them to pay for it and give it to us. And then it could be an increase in our in our in our monthly that they change to help recoup their costs. But they haven't been on the I've talked with them and they haven't been on the bang wagon, John, and say, hey, we're going to pay for it. But, you know, if that wanted to be brought up, it could be.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll write that. We'll be discussing that next week. Written reports, the GBS committee and subcommittee reports are all in the in the meeting notes minutes. Any questions on those reports, including I know Kyle's big report? I'll give you about 30 seconds to go on through. All right, actually, are there any main points you want to bring up, Kyle, from your manager report, which you haven't already covered?
No. The only thing that's still lingering, just the one thing I have is with the flasher system, the only thing that's still lingering is they're just trying to figure out how to reduce the delay time. So once you push the button, the button can't, the lights will go off and then the button will hold the lights from coming on for a certain amount of time, which I think is 30 seconds or 45 seconds. And we're trying to get rid of that delay at all. So that anytime anybody walks up, they push the button, the lights go on and alert drivers. So it's a it's a software issue and they're trying to work with the manufacturer to work that out. Otherwise, the system's been working. From what we can see, fine. So.
It's always blamed on a software issue. I did have one question about the disclosures, the library in the community room. I noticed in the report, it says, expected to be open in possibly mid-June. And we're in mid-June.
Yeah, so we're following the lead of the library as to when they start to do more public openings. You know, it's our workspace, but it's primarily their workspace, too. And so as of right now, the library throughout the whole system is not opening rooms or renting rooms. They haven't actually opened the libraries to general public. And so that's a call of administration. And so once we start to feel that or once they feel comfortable and they're comfortable with us running meetings, which invites a lot of people possibly into a building that's been fairly isolated, then then we'll we'll explore and talk with GBOS about opening meetings again.
Okay. In a related comment, I've seen quite a few people comment about the playground being, you know, rarely, rarely a masks being seen in the playground. Is that something that's recommended? And if it is recommended by Parks and Rec, should could we have some signs that that affect?
We do have signage out there. We put signage out there since we reopened all the playgrounds.
Okay.
And we also work with our contractor that has hand sanitizer that is is filled and kept in the outhouses. So there's a source there for sanitation. I know there's been some questions about why don't we have bathrooms? It's just really a cost issue. And and then the associated problems with having outhouses in the long term. So we've always used the renicans, which, you know, we can contract out, they take care of, and they respond to when there's problems with them.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? Okay, not hearing any. We have pending items on the list, but we don't need to go through those. I would see if anyone would be interested in a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. Quick one, Mike.
Right. I think by consensus, we'll consider that passed. Thank you, everybody.
I see everybody.
Okay, great. Thanks, John.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, bye.